Okay, if I could call the meeting to order, please. Welcome to the 2021 Reorganization Meeting of the Haynesport Township Committee. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of January 5th, 2021 was included in a meeting notice sent to the Burlington County Times and Courier-Post on January 8th, 2020, and advertised in said newspapers on January 10th and January 11th, 2020, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building on January 9th, 2020, and has remained continuously posted as required under the statute. Instructions for Internet access of this meeting was posted on our website, bulletin boards, and main doors the Wednesday before this meeting and advertised in the Burlington County Times and Courier-Post on October 20th, 2020. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. If I could please ask to come forward, Haynesport Troop Number Five Eagle Scout candidate Daniel Nichols, who is going to lead us in the flag salute. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
At this time, resident William Lynch will lead the invocation.
First hour ahead of prayer. Get easy, boys. We give you thanks for a new year. May we want to fill in the hope that those that came will still be history. Ready this year will be healthy, where we may remove our masks so we can see smiles and see politics from our documents. Let me hear you here and serve our community, that we can open new plans, new decisions, and new careers. We give thanks for our leaders who serve our great capital and are willing to serve others. We pray for those who may be struggling in our town, through sickness, loss of employment, or other issues, and may they find comfort in their time of need. We ask you to guide us so that this and future meetings may be effective and decisive. May this new year be one of all those peace, justice, and the love for the benefit of our community. All of this we ask for God's sake. Amen.
Statement of election for members of the Township Committee. This shall certify that Ken Montgomery, with a total of 2,136 votes, officially won the November 3rd, 2020, election for Haynesport Township Committee. This shall certify that Bruce Levinson, with a total of 2,076 votes, officially won the November 3rd, 2020, election for Haynesport Township Committee. At this time, our newly elected officials will be sworn in. The first to be sworn in for a three-year term is Bruce Levinson by committee man Bruce McLaughlin. If you could please come forward, and once you are sworn in, you may take your seat at the dais.
I, Bruce Levinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Haynesport Township Committee member.
Of the office of Haynesport Township Committee member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next to be sworn in for a three-year term is Ken Montgomery by committee man Bruce McLaughlin. Please come forward with your family. Once sworn in, you may take your seat at the dais.
I, Ken Montgomery, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Haynesport Township Committee member.
Of the office of Haynesport Township Committee member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I apologize in advance for the length of it, but it must be done. Any question or comment on agenda items that were transmitted to the administrator, municipal clerk by 4:00 PM on the Tuesday of the meeting shall be considered by the Township Committee and entered into the official minutes of the meeting by either the mayor or clerk during the corresponding public comment periods. Individuals that are attending the meeting remotely will be able to fully participate in the meeting. I request that all phones and microphones be muted. When public hearings and public comments commence, I will unmute all participants. If you would like to speak, please clearly state your name and address. I will acknowledge your turn to participate at that time and continue to manage the order. Once done speaking, please re-mute yourself. If a remote participant becomes disruptive, the clerk will mute the individual and give a warning. If persists, the individual will be muted and/or removed from the meeting. Documents available to the in-person public may be found on the Haynesport Township website with the agenda and remote meeting instructions. At this time, we have roll call.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Levinson?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Cloud?
Here.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Our first resolution for the evening, Resolution 2021-1-1, Appointing the Mayor, Chairperson of the governing body of the Haynesport Township Committee for 2021. Is there a nomination and motion for mayor?
I would like to nominate Lila Gilmore for mayor.
And I would second that.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Yes.
Committee woman Gilmore, please come forward for the oath of office of mayor, which will be administered by previous mayor Frank Mischacki.
I, Lila Gilmore.
I, Lila Gilmore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Haynesport Township Deputy Mayor.
Haynesport Township Deputy Mayor.
Vice Chairman of Township Committee.
Vice Chairman of Township Committee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
At this time, Appointment Resolution 2021-2-1, Appoint Deputy Mayor, Vice Chairman of the Township Committee. I would like to nominate Bruce McLaughlin.
I'll second that.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
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 Thank you, committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, Bruce McLaughlin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And that I will faithfully. And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Haynesport Township Deputy Mayor.
Haynesport Township Deputy Mayor.
Vice Chairman of Township Committee.
Vice Chairman of Township Committee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, committee. Appreciate it.
At this point in time, I'd like to take a break and introduce, reintroduce, our Eagle Scout candidate, Daniel Nichols, who'd like to speak to us about a project he has going on for his Eagle Scout.
Hello, my name is Daniel Nichols, and for my Eagle Scout project, I would like to put banners up around the Haynesport Township Park. These are what the banners look like. There are veteran banners, so for these veterans, it says their name on it, the years they served, what board they served, and just a picture of them and the family that sponsored it. So the banners cost $150 a piece. They can either be paid for by the family or a local business or company to sponsor them, and then the company would get their name written under the banner. So, one of the biggest problems that I've been having right now is getting it out, so I only have one person for it right now. So, I've been putting stuff on the marquee, I think it's called, like the big electronic board outside, put stuff on the website and on the face, Haynesport Happening. Just more about the banners, they last two to five years depending on weather, but like in the middle of the field, they're obviously going to last less because they're going to be constantly hit by wind. And if you take them down like every half year, they'll last double the amount of time. So, does anyone have any questions?
So how would somebody contact you to let you know?
There's, on the marquee, there's a contact number, and on the website that you can find the contact number and just call that, and I'm pretty sure there's even also.
Do you have additional brochures?
I'm in the process of making some right now, so next time, they'll be on the website, so.
How many banners, where will there be?
I was planning on doing 24, but I don't feel like, well, I hope I can get to that number, but I don't know if I'm going to be able to, so I'm just trying to get as many done as I can.
What is your deadline?
May 1st.
May 1st?
Yeah, that's when I want to have them up by, and they take a month to me, so I would like to.
Daniel, thank you for doing this. This is a great, great idea. Best wishes with your Eagle Scout.
Thank you.
I remember you when you were much, much smaller.
Yeah.
I don't know if you remember me, but, okay, very good. Soccer coach. You said you're having trouble getting it out.
Yeah.
You mean, you mean getting people to.
Yeah, to.
Agree to do it. The veterans.
And if I don't get anyone to do it, I'll, I know there's like some database where I can find and contact the people, but I wanted to like people to contact me, but that's obviously not working, so.
Yeah, it might be worth, it might be worth doing, and however we can help you within legal ramifications, of course, around it, we certainly would want to do that, so, yeah. Good job.
What was the dollar figure on each one again?
What was that?
What was the dollar figure you expected or?
There are $150.
$150 each?
Yeah.
Does that include the hardware and the banner?
Mm-hmm.
Does Paula have your contact information? You don't? Good.
What is the criteria? Does the veteran have to live here? Does the veteran have to be deceased?
Um.
Can he be a relative of somebody here?
Um, I was thinking about doing like they had to live here for at least a year, but I mean, I'm, now I'm not really going to be too like strict on the criteria, as long as I can get people like who have lived here, like up there.
But living or deceased?
Like lived in here but deceased now.
They are deceased now, right.
So when you, when you receive, let's say, this $150, I mean, how do you know who you want to apply it to? Which banner?
Well, the family's going to pay for the banner, or if they can't pay for the banner, I'm going to get like a local company with like the help of my troop to sponsor it, so they'll have their name under it also, so the family doesn't have to worry about the cost of the banner. Any more questions?
Can we have your information?
Yeah.
Dale, have you reached out to any businesses to see if they'd be open to?
Not yet, but I know a couple who would be.
Because if it's $150, and of course there's upkeep, so you might want to think of that as far as what you would anticipate this happening every year, because you want them to continue it.
Yeah.
But they would get their name at the bottom of the banner if they're a business to support it, so it seems to me that that would be very inexpensive.
Yeah.
Advertising for them and such a worthy cause, especially if there was some relation to that veteran.
Yeah.
But it appears that you're having trouble getting the veterans.
Yeah.
Period.
Like that live in Haynesport, yes.
Right.
Well, I'm going to start contacting people like starting this week, so I'll see how it goes after that, and then I guess I'll have to come back and update you guys.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, so going forward, Resolution 2021-3-1 is to appoint the liaison and deputy liaison committee persons. Public, do I need to read them all?
Sorry.
Should I read them all? I can just, that's good enough. So can I have a motion? And a second?
Motion to accept 2021-3-1.
I'll second.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-4-1, Authorizing Various Professional Appointments and Contracts. Township Auditor Bowman &amp; Company, Township Solicitor Parker McKay, Township Engineer Alamo Group, Township Special Conflict Projects Engineer Environmental Resolutions Bremington Vernick, Turek Consulting, Township Planner Taylor Design, Bond Counsel Parker McKay, Affordable Housing Parker McKay, Labor Attorney Parker McKay, Conflict Attorney Raymond Coleman &amp; Heinhold, Animal Control, New Jersey Animal Control Services, Affordable Housing Planner CGP&amp;H, Affordable Housing Administering Agent CPG&amp;H, Risk. Yep, that's it. I need another motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I need a second?
Second.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-6-1, Joint Land Use Board Governing Body Class 1 through Class 4 and alternate members. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-7-1, Environmental Commission, three-year term expiring 12/31/2023.
Motion.
Neroli Torres.
Motion to approve 2021-7-1. Second.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-8-1, To Appoint the Joint Insurance Fund Commissioner Paula Cosco, Alternate Fund Commissioner Donna Kilburn, Claims Coordinator Donna Kilburn, Safety Coordinator Paula Cosco.
Motion. Motion. Second.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Second. Bruce.
Mr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-9-1, To Appoint the Deputy Clerk Tara Wicker.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-10-1, Approving the Public Agency Compliance Officer Paula Cosco.
Motion to approve 2021-10-1. Second.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-11-1, Appointing the Qualified Purchasing Agent Paula Cosco.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Mr. Gillespie, would you like to join us up here? Resolutions 2021-12-1 through Resolution 2021-30-1 are listed as consent agenda resolutions.
I'll make a motion that we approve these resolutions.
I'll second that.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Cloud?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Comments from the public?
Hannah in the back.
Yes, Hannah.
You could just stand like near us. Sorry. Yeah, I'll do it. I just wanted to make sure that my wife is coming around.
Thank you.
I've known him last time. He's really happy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, yes. Mr. Uh, oh, what is that name? Taha?
Taha.
Was that Mr. Costa? Did you have your hand?
Good to see everybody. You know, I'm so used to being up there and looking down here, listening to the complaints. I feel like I can complain by something, but I thought I'd make a point about it. I just came to wish all of you a good, successful, happy joy here, and of course, congratulations again to Ken Montgomery and Bruce Levinson.
Thank you.
And we expect great things from you. Yeah, usually I'd like to pass the proverbial baton to my successors, but I don't have the baton today. I've got a key to the door.
Oh.
A magnetic key, and I'd like to present this to someone.
That would go to committee man Levinson.
Okay, Bruce?
Thank you, sir.
I give this to you.
Sorry about that.
This is for success.
Thank you, sir.
And I hope you're gonna continue here. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. McCoughlin?
I'm going to stay here and just call back. H. McCoughlin, January 23, East End, Wayne, Haynesport. I want to, I'm hoping I'm not going to embarrass anybody other than myself, but my term on the joint land use board expired about four days ago, and I just wanted to add a word for letting me be on to a new term.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-6-1 joint land use board governing body class one through class four and alternate members. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-7-1 environmental commission, three-year term expiring 12/31/2023. Norley Torres?
Motion to approve 2021-7-1. Second.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-8-1 to appoint the joint insurance fund commissioner Paula Cosco, alternate fund commissioner Donna Kilburn, claims coordinator Donna Kilburn, safety coordinator Paula Cosco.
Motion.
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 Second. Second, Bruce.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-9-1 to appoint the deputy clerk Tara Wicker.
So moved? Second.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Resolution 2021-10-1 approving the public agency compliance officer Paula Cosco.
Motion to approve 2021-10-1. Second.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-11-1 appointing the qualified purchasing agent Paula Cosco.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Mr. Gillespie, would you like to join us up here? Resolutions 2021-12-1 through resolution 2021-30-1 are listed as consent agenda resolutions.
I'll make a motion that we approve these resolutions.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Yes. Comments from the public?
Hannah in the back.
Yes, Hannah. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, yes. Mr. Oh, what is that name? Tohas? Costa? Mr. Costa? Did you have your hand?
Good to see everybody. You know, I'm still used to being up there and looking down here listening to complaints. I feel like I can complain by something, but I thought I'd make a point about it. I just came to wish all of you a good, successful, happy journey here. And of course, congratulations again to Ken Montgomery and Bruce Levinson.
Thank you.
And we expect great things from you. Yeah, usually I'd like to pass the proverbial baton to my successors, but I don't have a baton today. I've got a key to the door. A magnetic key, and I'd like to present this to someone.
That would go to Committeeman Levinson.
Okay, Bruce?
Thank you, sir. Sorry about that. Thank you, sir.
And I hope you can continue here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. McLaughlin?
I'm going to stay here and just call back. H. McLaughlin, January 23, East End Way, Hainsport. I want to, I'm hoping I'm not going to embarrass anybody other than myself, but my term on the joint land use board expired that four days ago. And I just wanted to ask a question for letting me be on to the main event.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, H.
Thanks, H.
Anyone else here in the room? Oops, I see in the back. Oh.
I think you all have a new role in the town of Hainsport as construction tech. I'd just like to congratulate our new, I don't know, many people. Congratulations to the great honor and experience.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with all of you through the year. And I think, you know, I can speak on behalf of us employees that we look forward to a better year, hoping that this tough one gets behind us and moves forward. Thank you, Ben.
Here, here.
Thanks, Jesse. Thank you.
Mr. Lynch, did you have something?
May I just say that all the years I've been on the panel, I want to thank all of you who just retired in the past. And thank you for all the years that you served with me. I appreciate it. I just, I could correct it. I didn't retire.
Yes, you did. You've been reappointed.
So, Mr. Kroll Pfeifer, it is on the resolution for your reappointment. It's just not on the agenda. But you are on there for your resolution.
Thank you. That's why I said I didn't need to embarrass anybody, especially me. Return of God, the extra blessing of our passion of Hainsport. For the nation to give the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, we go freely elected, hence the nod of the one here to see. May they faithfully serve in their offices and promote the well-being of all the residents. We give thanks to our volunteers and our employees who play for the Center of our community. The answer is a father's credit, thanks of the God who sent you to serve this year. Thank that is widely accepted. In growing the cause and evaluating their options. May there be a spirit of camaraderie, camaraderie, or a commitment to others to make the best decisions for all the people of Hainsport. Lord, amen.
I don't have a public comment. They're done with the public yet.
So with, anybody online with comments?
We have one person online. It is one of the special project engineers.
Okay, so we don't need to. So comments from the committee? Mr. Levinson?
Wow, so I can hardly wait to hear what I have to say. First of all, try and be brief when I count on my throat. Last time I spoke, Lent, some people wanted to put their hands around it. It's supposed to be funny. I want to congratulate my running mate Ken. Together, I think we ran a good campaign. He was a great teammate, and I think we'll bring that cooperation to the township committee. We'll get things done. Also wanted to extend a hand to Jim Horowitz and Dave Moats. They ran a great campaign, and they're a truly gentleman. I want to thank all of our supporters, as well as those who didn't support us. We intend to represent all of Hainsport. I want to thank the supporters, but mostly my wife, who was the wind beneath my wings and my most ardent supporter and also my greatest critic. She's always there for me. With regard to local government, it's the basic form of government. I'm sure it was the first form of government. It's where the rubber really meets the road. It's where people driving through our town, as well as residents who live in our town, get to see the resolutions and ordinances put forth by our township committee. And it's even where somebody from a residence can become a township committeeman like me. And they put their faith in and they put their trust in the township committeemen to do good deeds for their town. And that's what I intend to do, good deeds for our town. Make no mistake about it, that Hainsport has a gem. It's a diamond in a rough, and together we can make it shine even brighter. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do want to acknowledge some, quite a few dignitaries here in addition to the families of Ken and Bruce and Leila. Of course, my wife's here. Appreciate you coming, Laura. We have some notables, of course, the Lynch family, AKA Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. I hope I'm not giving anything away there. I'd like to honor Frank Mashaki, our former multiple-time mayor. We have Lee Snyder, deputy mayor and former committee person. Of course, we have Ted. Ted's been a longtime friend of mine and helped me get into this business. And of course, to his left, we have Richie. Richie was an activist that actually first got me involved in, in politics in some way. So we also have H. And H, I apologize for that. I thought you got up and were talking about being elected the chairperson of the planning board, because as you know, the planning board will do that. And of course, we have Marty Miller. Thank you, Marty, for coming, and you have a job again for next year. And of course, next to H, Anna Evans is here. She's been involved in politics for a long, long time. So appreciate everybody showing up. And of course, Paula and Kathy, you know, longtime Hainsport employees that are the fabric of everything we do. And now we have a building run by women, so watch out, guys.
Were they applauding for that comment?
I think they're happy. I think, and you know what? It really doesn't matter if they're women or men, but they all do a great job, and I think that should come first. You know, I appreciate everything that you do. And Leila, I'm sure you'll be a great mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Montgomery? McLaughlin?
Jumps to me. Okay. She's the boss. Whatever you say. I, I just like to say that I'm very humbled and very honored to have been elected by the people of Hainsport and being, and sitting here, living here for twenty-five, twenty-six years. You know, never thought that I would take the step to do this. And I want to thank my wife, Mela, who's sitting here, and my daughter, Michaela, and my daughter, Mackenzie, and my daughter, McKenna, and my daughter, McKelsey, who supported me with this campaign and delivered brochures and went door to door. And the support and the encouragement and, and what they will be giving me in the next three years, I'll thank in advance. Certainly want to thank H. Kroll Pfeifer, who's in the back there, who was our treasurer, for Bruce Levinson and I. And I must say, Bruce and I are from the same hometown where we grew up, in Willingboro, New Jersey, and went to the same high school, John F. Kennedy. And he was, we were there at the same time, and he was older than me. So I knew him, he didn't know me because I was the youngster. But just such a pleasure, pleasure running with him and meeting his wife, Lorraine. And I so much looking forward to serving with him and, and with Mayor Leila Gilmore. And just congratulations again to you and Deputy Mayor Bruce McLaughlin and Jerry Klaus. I've known all these people for some time, some more than others. Want to acknowledge Lee Snyder and Ted Costa, who were also helpful in our campaign, and thank them for their service in the past, as well as former mayor Frank Mashati here in the audience. Certainly, a building run by women is similar to my house, as I just mentioned. So I hope I can live up to those expectations. And certainly want to thank those that voted for Bruce and me, or Bruce or me, and those that didn't. Because when you're dealing with local, local government here, it's, it's not politics. It's really what's best for the people. And I truly, truly expect and demand that of myself and everyone else up here to do what's best for the people of Hainsport. And that is truly in my heart to do so. So thank you once again. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out to their reorganization meeting. Congratulate Bruce and Ken. I look forward to working with you guys. Congratulations to Bruce McLaughlin, our deputy mayor, Leila Ezra, mayor. And, you know, I wish everybody well. And I'm going to be short. That's it.
I'm going to be a little bit longer because I'd like to welcome everyone coming to tonight's meeting, whether you're here in person, on the phone, or in the virtual meeting. I especially want to thank Bill Lynch, Dan Nichols, former mayor Frank Mashaki, for coming out and supporting us this evening and participating in the meeting. Thank you, Ted, and H., Lee, for coming by. It's an honor to have you here. Congratulations to Bruce Levinson and Ken Montgomery on being elected to the township committee. I'm looking forward to working with both of you, along with deputy mayor Bruce McLaughlin and Jerry Klaus. I'm honored and humbled to represent the citizens of Hainsport as their mayor and accept the responsibilities that this office and public service brings. The people of Hainsport put their trust in me when they reelected me to office and the committee when they voted me in as mayor. I take great pride in this honor. I promise to do my best to be worthy of your trust. I also promise to continue to dedicate my time, effort, and open-mindedness, along with my love of this community, to guide me to make the best decisions for our town. Being an elected official is truly a challenging, yet immensely rewarding job. There is a lot of work to be done, and I look forward to sharing it with my fellow committeemen, our ADELE staff, and the people of Hainsport. Working together, we will keep check on the finances, protect our assets, and encourage business. I will continue to listen to all the ideas and concerns brought to my attention. I do not claim to have all the answers, but I have many professionals to reach out to. Congratulations to all of our newly appointed and reappointed professionals. Nothing we do as a town is done in a vacuum. The comprehensive plan that shapes our future, our zeal for holding fast to our small-town image, our extraordinary high level of volunteerism is citizen-driven. I want the people of Hainsport to listen to one another, to pursue the mutual goals. Only if we work together as a community will we sustain our vision. As mayor, I commit to citizen participation and civility. Thank you again for your trust. With that, I adjourn the meeting.
You want to stay up here for a picture?
Yeah. So we could.
Hi.
Hi.
You want to leave it up to the picture?
Yeah, I'll pick it up.
Both are going to take a picture. They said please stay at the dais, Jerry. You want us up here, or you want us to just be all have a little time?
Stay at the dais. You're not allowed to take the binders home. You know that.
No, we just empty them. We empty the binders, and we'll take them. The paperwork, if you don't want it.
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of January 5th, 2021 was included in a meetings notice sent to the Burden County Times and the Courier-Post on January 8th, 2020, and advertised in said newspapers on January 10th, 2020, and January 11th, 2020, respectively. Posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building on January 9th, 2020, and has remained continuously posted as required under the statute. Instructions for internet access of the meeting was posted on our website, bulletin boards, and main doors on the Friday before the meeting, and advertised in the Burden County Times and the Courier-Post on October 20th, 2020. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Meeting is called to order. The flag salute?
For the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Uncle?
Mayor Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Levinson?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Here. Here.
Mayor Gilmore, may I read the remote?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any question or comment on agenda items that were transmitted to the administrator municipal clerk by 4:00 PM on the Tuesday of the meeting shall be considered by the township committee and entered into the official minutes of the meeting by either the mayor or myself during the corresponding public comment periods. Individuals that are attending the meeting remotely will be able to fully participate in the meeting. I request that all phones and microphones be muted. When public hearings and public comments commence, I will unmute all participants. If you would like to speak, please clearly state your name and address. I will acknowledge your turn to participate at the time and continue to manage the order. Once done speaking, please remute yourself. If a remote participant becomes disruptive, I will mute the individual and give a warning. If disruption persists, the individual will be muted and/or removed from the meeting. Documents available to the in-person public may be found on the Hainsport Township website with the agenda and remote meeting instructions.
Thank you. Okay. We have the regular committee meeting minutes of December 8th, 2020, and the executive session minutes of December 8th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. We've received reports from the tax collector, code enforcement, fire official, construction, and emergency services reports.
I'll make the motion that we receive and file the reports.
I'll second that.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. There are comments from the public for non-ordinance agenda items only. Anyone have a comment regarding the agenda item?
Do you have one person online?
Okay. No comment? Okay, so we'll go through to the ordinances?
Mr. McLaughlin?
H. McLaughlin, your reply to what I came for. I just have a question. Suppose someone has, in the public, has a comment to make about one of the two ordinances. I mean, it just surprises me. Who gave them a thought about that? Do you want to make a change? You couldn't say anything about it. This is not a non-ordinance.
Correct, because you say there are comments at each ordinance, after each ordinance.
Okay, because I know the public comments at the end also.
Correct.
I just think if anyone gets, somebody comes up with a comment at the end, it's a way to see your mission to action.
Well, there's no action to be taken on the ordinance. It's a, it's. It's the first reading and introduction.
Well, sometimes it is the actual.
Right, then there would be at that time, correct?
Yeah, in that case, so, so at the end of this meeting, there is a public comment. So if there's, if there is not, if the ordinance is introduced as presented for the township committee, then during public comment at the end, someone could raise a question or come up with a great idea, as you suggest. Committee would be free to then amend it or whatever it wants to do. But the public hearing will be held at the next meeting, and that's where we really don't want public comment on the ordinance that's not under that section of the agenda because you're creating a legislative record. So the public hearing, any comments on the ordinance should be during the public hearing, so it's all at the same point. If someone should challenge the ordinance later on. because you're creating a legislative record. So, the public hearing, any comments on the ordinance should be during the public hearing, so it's all at the same point. If someone should challenge the ordinance later on, we don't have to go fishing around from where those comments were. They're in that section of the agenda.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so we have Ordinance 2021-1, adopting the New Jersey Best Management Practices for Municipal Storm Water Control. This is the first reading and introduction. The public hearing and final adoption will be February 16th. But this, it amends our management plan to meet the new requirements regarding major developments and becomes effective on March 3rd. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-31-1, establishing the 2021 Temporary Budget.
Motion to adopt 2021-31-1. Second.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-33-1, authorizing execution of escrow agreement with Mount Holly Nissan.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-33-1. Second.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-34-1, authorizing issuance of a raffle license to the Lady Spire EMS Auxiliary.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-35-1, authorizing the release of a performance guarantee for Bear Tire and Auto Center. The project was abandoned.
Motion to adopt 2021-35-1.
I'll second.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Resolution 2021-36-1, authorizing the discharge of a mortgage for housing rehabilitation program.
Motion to adopt 2021-36-1. Second.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. We have some business licenses to approve. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve the business licenses.
I second it.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Okay, now we're open for comments from the public. Anyone that wants to make a comment at this time? Online?
Mr. Meads, did you have any comments?
I do not. We thought this was important.
Thank you, we will try. Comments from the Administrator?
Okay, I do have a few. The Senior Freeze Property Tax Reimbursement Program has been extended again to February 1st, 2021. It reimburses eligible senior citizens and disabled individuals for increases in property taxes or mobile home park site fees. So, any information, you can reach out to the New Jersey Division of Taxation, Senior Freeze Property Tax Reimbursement Information Line or website, or you can always reach out to our Tax Collector, Paula Tyber, for more information on that. Our new trash hauler will begin this Thursday. Central Jersey Waste and Recycling, and their information is up on our website. So, I do ask the public and everyone to bear with us on the first couple of weeks as we transition to our new contractor. The bid has been released. The advertisement for bid for the Bancroft Lane Road and Stormpipe Improvements, the one at 22 Bancroft Lane, that was put on the streets on the 4th, this past Monday, and opening will be on January 14th, 10:00 a.m. here. And then, finally, I want to say I look forward to working with the 2021 Committee. Congratulations again to everyone, and hopefully, this year is a better year for everyone's health and our prosperity and opening back up.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gillespie?
Thank you, ma'am. Just a couple of things. One, I noticed in the bill list that the Ferrera family had two winners of the Gingerbread House Contest, so I think that we should remember that next December, because that's the place to be for the holidays, right? So, we need to go to their house next December. Two, I want to congratulate Committee Levinson and Montgomery for your election and for taking office. You both spoke eloquently about the roles of local elected officials, and you're absolutely right. It is public service in its truest sense. I also want to note, however, that this may be the first time that not only in Haynesport Township, probably any municipality, did you have three JFK grads serving.
Joe Griffin.
So, I also want to point out that the three Griffins now outnumber the two Pemberton Hornets. These things happen. And then, third, most importantly, and seriously, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve at this committee again. It is, being municipal attorney, and this is now my 37th year I'm starting doing this, is an absolute privilege, because you are the folks who truly provide public service at the best level, right? The most common level, where you get to see people on the shopping carts and the grocery store, and you're right there where Assemblymen and Senators are not. I mean, you are public service, and I thank you for this privilege. I love this seat.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
Okay, comments from the committee. Mr. Levinson?
No comments.
Okay, Mr. McLaughlin?
I did want to congratulate Bruce and Ken. I think the guys ran a great campaign. I really enjoyed the videos. They were, the guys are superstars. And of course, Lila, congratulations for your mayorship and look forward to working with you. And of course, Jerry, it's a pleasure to have you back with us and look forward to the campaign next year, or this year, actually.
Is this year?
With you.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery?
So, do I repeat what I said the last time, or is...
Not as long.
Yeah. A lot of people to thank, that's for sure. I don't know if I was long with it.
No, I'm just kidding.
Just humbled and blessed and thankful to have been elected by the people of Haynesport and to my running mate, Bruce Levinson, and thank all those people in this room that supported us, and even those that didn't support us know that we certainly support the people of Haynesport and will do the best we can to continue the wonderful town in which we live in. So, thank you.
I'll say it again. Congratulations to our new committee members, our new Deputy Mayor, our new Mayor. And I got to tell you, I have a good feeling about this committee. I think we're an excellent committee, and I look forward to a great year of serving the public. And I just hope the public is able to come and fill this room, because I always like it. When they're here with all their concerns, it's nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, once again, I want to thank everyone for attending the meeting tonight, the first Township Meeting of 2021 this year. I'd like to also congratulate everybody for being elected, re-elected, and I think, too, we have a great committee going forward. And I'm very grateful for the people that work for us and with us, and appreciate all the help and anticipated help that we will receive this year going forward. This year, I'm looking for volunteers. I'm reaching out to the community of Haynesport. We're looking for volunteers to join our Mayor's Wellness Campaign. It's a program to inspire residents to live their healthiest lives. We want to make Haynesport a healthier place to live, work, and play through activities and programs. I'm looking for people with various skills, healthcare professionals, people involved with physical fitness, nutritionists, massage therapists, chiropractors, fundraisers, organizers, all types of individuals to help with the program. Some of the programs that might get initiated are like a Health and Wellness Fair for senior citizens, a bike-a-thon, walking club, yoga, Tai Chi, Zumba, art in the park, nutrition and exercise, whether it be in person, inside, outside, or through the Zoom type of experience. If you're available to help, think you could help in some way, to please contact either Donna Casey or myself here at the Township Building. You can get the phone number through the website, or it's (609) 267-2730, and your help would be much appreciated. We want input from everyone, from all different areas of the Township. I hope we have representatives from Sage Run and from the Heights, from, we'd like everybody to get involved. We're also looking ahead to 2024 and our town celebration for the Centennial. We need people to help organize historic information on our town, any pictures they may have, artifacts, any information at all. It's time to start preparing for the celebration. We hope to have a rather large celebration for our Centennial. So, there again, please contact Donna Casey here at the building. And that's all I have, so let's pay some bills.
I'll make the motion that we pay the bills.
I second it.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Levinson?
Yes.
Mr. Klaus?
Yes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, please.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. Okay.
Great job.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes.
Good job, boys.
Now, do your dabble, Lila. Thank you, Mayor.
It's still running. Thank you.